Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the North Andover School Committee for January 9th, 2020 to order. Our first order of business is this pledge of allegiance, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you mind standing for one second? We want to have a quick moment of silence. Dr. Gilligan?
Yeah, thank you Chair Turrisi. Just a quick moment of silence. Just recently, we lost an eight-year-old student out at the Sargent School in one of our programs. And in honor of her tonight, a moment of silence and keep her family. And your thoughts as well as the remarkable team at Sargent that has rallied to support the family and the work that they do every single day with kids that face challenges. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. First order of business is public comment. In the public want to make a comment at this point. We'll also public comment at the end. Seeing none. No recognition tonight, is that correct?
No, none tonight.
Okay. I know we thought about it.
We're trying.
We're trying. Going to get them, but come out in cold. All right. First order consent agenda is approval of minutes. A bad chance to look over the minutes from our time at the Kittredge School back in December.
I will move to approve the minutes of November, I'm sorry, December 19th, 2019, as presented in the packet.
We have a motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Lynch. Any further discussion? Any edits? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed no. No one. Thoughts no. It's 4-0. And then we tell the public that Ms. Picard was unable to make it tonight, so it will just be for the four of us tonight. Okay, student report. Jack is here today. Welcome. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, happy new year. At the high school, I want to just backtrack to 2019 for a second. So, in the week before the holiday vacation, the DECA had their big regional competition at Merrimack College. And I know we've talked about it at recent meetings, but I have some specific information about the competition, about how North Andover students did that's pretty impressive, that Mr. Jackson published in his school report, in his principal's report this week. So, at DECA, 54 teams and 87 students qualified for the state competition, which is an absurdly high amount of students to be advancing to states in Boston. It's a really impressive accomplishment. And out of those students, I wanted to just mention that 37 of them got first place in their competitions. So, that's also a pretty amazing achievement. So, they'll be competing the first week of March at the Prudential Center in Boston. Those who advance from the state's competition will move on to nationals. And we usually end up sending several students to that competition as well. As for Student Council's operation donation was the week before the holiday vacation, or it was throughout the month of December where first-period classes would raise money to support children in the area in need of gifts during the holiday season. So, it supported boys and girls of all age levels. And each class would be assigned like a silhouette of an anonymous child, like it would say 16-year-old boy or 4-year-old girl. And then after you raised the money to fund a gift for that kid, the class could go out, purchase the gift, wrap it, and then bring it to Mr. Mealy. And it was donated to the Lawrence Department of Children and Families. So, the NAS community ended up raising enough to support 40 children through that gift drive. Yeah. Additionally, so now on to 2020. The first big event of 2020 was the Alumni Brunch and Question and Answer last Friday. This was for juniors to ask questions and get answers from alumni who graduated last year, whether it's about the college process or college life in general. I went to this last year. I didn't go this year because I'm a senior and it's specifically for juniors. But it was, for me, it was a very helpful part of the college process, kind of telling me to get going with the college process once I got some questions answered about their experiences. And it was a good experience. The rest of the school was in advisory at that time. As for things coming up or going on right now, there are, next Tuesday night, there will be a college prep test night, or a college test fair, like for college prep resources, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM for juniors and sophomore students that the guidance department is hosting. And that will be followed by College Bound Juniors Night from 6:00 to 8:00 PM next Tuesday night as well. So, that's another helpful resource for juniors who are looking to go to college in the next two years. Additionally, the Environmental and Heel Clubs are currently running a used winter gear donation drive for the Lazarus House. There are donation bins outside the nurse's office and also Mr. Anderson's room for anybody interested in donating during the winter season. Also, the Drama Guild is currently very busy. They're preparing for two separate performances right now between the musical that they always do, which is Footloose this year, which I believe the performances are the weekend of February 8th. I'm not sure the exact dates and times, but it's the weekend of the 8th of February. Also, they are preparing for the annual Drama Fest competition, which is like a statewide competitive competition that they participate in. And it's basically like a head-to-head. They prepare like a short play and compete against other schools and are judged. So, that's their big competition for the year, that they're also preparing on top of Footloose, the musical. Additionally, tomorrow night, there will be a student ambassador-sponsored tailgate at the high school from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. There will be food, there will be games, there will be music, and just like a fun atmosphere in the cafeteria. All students are welcome to attend before the game. And of the attendees, there will be a raffle for a free ticket to the game. So, after the tailgate, there will be the basketball game for the boys' basketball team, and that will be starting at 7:00. So, the tailgate is 6:00 to 7:00, and then the game starts at 7:00. Finally, National Honor Society is selling phone wallets and pop sockets for a fundraiser to raise money for senior scholarships for Scholarship Night in June. And those both have like North Andover logos on them. So, anybody interested in buying those can stop by the National Honor Society table at lunch. Also, I just remembered now, Interact Club is also, has been hosting a bake sale to raise money for their club at lunch. So, that's also going on at that table. And Model UN is also selling like koozies for like iced coffees that a lot of students bring iced coffees. So, that's what they're pitching that for. But Model UN is also having that fundraiser that they're doing. So, yeah. Now, that was a lot.
I think he stopped and breathed.
Yeah, just a lot going on.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for the update and good luck on hearing from your colleges.
Oh, thank you. Yeah.
Take care. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Just one quick update, Ms. Marks.
If you could just share a few words on the walkthrough, the instructional rounds at Atkinson.
Oh, sure. So, we've changed our walkthroughs a little bit this year. We still have some general questions focused on curriculum and instruction, but we've started to also look at those classes when we go through them through the eyes of particular students and student profiles. So, this time, we had four groups that went around, and they either had a specific curriculum-type question. We were looking specifically at Eureka Math this time. So, it could have been curriculum, it could have been small group instruction, it could have been whether they saw signs of formative assessment, the exit tickets that they use with the Eureka Math, or to look at that class and that experience through the eyes of a student with auditory processing disorder, a student who had a trauma background, or a student who was an English language learner. So, it was really targeted. The first time we did it, it was a little bit looser. And it was, I felt really productive. And I know there was a lot of talk afterwards and a lot of good feedback. So, it's something that we're continuing to refine. But really, when we look at our strategic plan and equity for all students, we want to really start to take a look at all of our students and what that experience is like in that classroom. And then one of our other points on our strategic plan is targeted professional development. So, then looking at those experiences that all of our students are having, and then how do we provide the PD needed for our teachers to successfully reach those students. So, it was really, it was a great experience. So, we look forward to the next one.
All right. Quick Chair's report. I did attend the FinCon meeting on Tuesday night, and I'm thankful that a couple of our members, their members, Tim and Chris, are in the audience tonight. First of, I'm sure, many meetings together over the next several months. But the town manager gave her revenue forecast for the next few years. I'm sure we'll discuss that at some point later on tonight. But, you know, just wanted to say that looking forward to working with both of you going forward as well as the rest of your committee. I want to save a lot of time for the superintendent's report. So, that's all I have on my report right now. Maybe just quickly, we'll do this old business about the community programs' budget adjustment that we talked about at our last meeting. This, Dr. Mealy?
We usually do this a little bit later in the year, but Rick's confident in the numbers. And this is based on increased participation and increased programming. And so it just makes the adjustment so that we can take in that revenue and then pay out expenses higher than anticipated.
Questions?
I just want to reiterate that I thought, we talked about this last time, but the level of programs that they are offering now is incredible. And I know my family's been taking advantage of them quite a bit. So, I think Rick and his team's doing a great job.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to say it last time I was going to, but there were a lot of people piling on, giving him accolades, which he deserves. The other thing I was going to just give you a heads up on is, I had been thinking about the opportunity of using the high school, especially at night, in some adult education programs or, you know, outside of school opportunities. And before I even had a chance to talk to Rick, he came to me and told me he was working on it and putting it together. So, that's something that may be coming in the near future as well, is looking to do some of those opportunities.
Okay. I think you were going to make a motion, Mr. McDevitt.
I'll move to approve an increase in the fiscal year 2020. Community programs revolving account budget to match the amounts on the attached spreadsheet and reflect it in the packet.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Lynch. Any further discussion? It's a very great motion, by the way. Very informative motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's 4-0 as well. Okay. New business presentation, the superintendent's recommended FY21 budget. I think after talking to Dr. Gilligan and Dr. Mealy, we're going to let them get through their entire presentation first, and then we'll get to questions. If there's a question, obviously, this is the first time we're really diving into it. We're going to have, obviously, a public hearing on it next Thursday, the 16th. And we will be voting on it on February 6th. So, there's obviously other opportunities to ask questions, but let's let them get through their presentation in full first, okay? Thank you. Dr. Gilligan, the floor is yours.
Is this presentation in this?
Yes. Yes, yeah.
Sorry. All right, okay.
Yes.
I just want to make notes as he's talking.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's linked as well. Thank you Chair Turrisi. Before I introduce the superintendent's recommended budget tonight, I want to thank the amazing team here with us tonight. Dr. Mealy, Lorraine Marks, and Marcy Picuzzi have done an incredible job, along with our principals and leadership team, preparing recommendations to meet the critical needs of our students at this time. To say we have spent dozens and dozens of hours would be an understatement. These recommendations are also based on our essential needs guided by the entry findings from last year. I spent the entire year meeting with the community. I think it was close to 22 or 23 meetings with a total of 1,136 community members, members from each school community, parents, staff, students, as well as, these are recommended to meet the needs within our strategic plan, which you just saw about a month ago. That's been updated with three objectives and 11 initiatives. And last but not least, they've been guided by the school committee directives. I feel as superintendent of schools, I have an obligation to communicate with our community on what I believe are the necessary and key resources needed to meet these needs, not only because I've been directed to by the school committee and their guidance, but also because my obligation as superintendent of schools is one that I take very seriously. And it's incredibly important that I advocate for the needs of all 4,769 students here in the district. So, I'm looking forward to a great presentation tonight, and the team will be participating as well. So, Dr. Mealy. All right. FY21 budget overview. The strategic plan and budget directives we will cover, we'll look at the overall financial picture, the proposed needs, along with comprehensive justifications, special education, and other changes, as well as a looking forward section. As many of you know, our strategic plan is based on three main objectives that focus around equity for all students, consistent and rigorous curriculum, and targeted professional practice. And those are very much in line with our previous strategic plan, along with 11 initiatives where we set out timelines, goals, who's responsible, and when we plan to meet those. Dr. Mealy? We also took into account the school committee budget directives. As you know, with class size is something that we've been tackling over the past couple of years. We've made some significant progress, and we'll talk about that later in the budget. But we also have other directives in terms of aligning our recommendations in the budget to meet the student needs that are critical and essential. And if you could go one more, Dr. Mealy? Okay. So, the overall financial picture. So, the cost of level services is typically every year runs at about 3%. This year, it's a little bit, slightly, over 3%. And as many of you know, the town manager has recommended a increase of 3.6% for the school department. And we have identified needs that we're recommending to the school committee tonight at 4.52%. I also think it's very important to point out that I've been working really collaboratively with the town manager. We've met weekly since she has arrived. And I think that we both recognize that North Andover is in the bottom three percentile of spending in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, 313th out of 323 school districts in terms of per pupil spending, and that we didn't get here overnight. We'll talk a little bit more about this in the presentation. But there's no doubt that we need to work collaboratively. And as a school department, we want to proceed in a way that's sustainable, fiscally responsible, and meets the identified needs of the students. All right. So, looking forward. I actually wanted to start with last year's slide. When we look at last year's final slide of FY20 budget, we had the strategic plan. We talked about the positive initiatives taking place, the entry plan feedback. But we also talked about how last year's strategic plan served as a transition year between myself and Dr. Price, and the goals that we had set out, and that we realized that we were facing not only operational needs here in the district, but capital needs as well. And it was critical to develop a multi-year plan, which is exactly what you'll see tonight. We'll see a plan not only in terms of our strategic plan, which is linked, but we'll also see a staffing plan that lays out requests over a period of five years in order to meet the needs identified by our team through the entry process and through the directives. And with that, Dr. Mealy?
So, as Dr. Gilligan mentioned, we are coming forward with a budget that has identified needs. It shows a difference between what we're proposing and what the town manager has said is available of $468,000. And so, we thought it was important to show how we got there. And I want to make clear that this information is important, but what's really driving our budget request are student needs, not the gap that I'm going to speak to here. This is the data that shows the per pupil spending, and this is an apples-to-apples comparison. The same data is available to the state from all communities. So, this takes everything into account that goes into per pupil spending. And North Andover back in 2010 was behind the state average, and this is the state average, not higher communities, but the average, by $2,171. That was back in 2010. So, in the last nine, 10 years, where by all measures, the economy has been very good, and taken 3.6% or up to, our average has been between 3.5% to 4% have been our annual increases over that period of time. What has happened is we've actually fallen behind. That gap has almost doubled because other communities have all been increasing by more than that. So, 2018, which is the last year that has complete data, the gap between us and the state average for per pupil spending was at $3,837. So, it's almost doubled. Graphically, you can see what that looks like. It's interesting. There's a little dip, the blue line being North Andover. The state average has been pretty steady in their annual increases. And we had a little dip in 2015. I have to look at, see where that was from. But you can see that the gap is widening instead of staying consistent or getting closer.
Thanks, Dr. Mealy.
So, this actually request only marginally impacts that gap. Simply put, if we were trying to do everything we wanted to do in five years, it would be an 11% increase. And it's really important here, as we will talk about in a minute, the operational and capital needs. We couldn't do it all at once anyway because we don't have the space available. A lot of those needs are related to class size, which we will talk about when we get a little bit further along. We also do really well relative to what we have. I mean, we have produced some amazing achievements here. If you take a look at the executive summary, I'll link to the agenda. I mean, it is incredible. We are recognized for award-winning athletics, robotics, drama, music programs. We have had some tremendous improvements on MCAS over the years, increased AP scores, have over 90% of our kids going to college, and just some really remarkable achievements as a result of tremendous staff. But more importantly, also, parents and a community that is, gives a lot. And it's pretty remarkable in terms of what PTOs do for the enrichment, paying for the enrichment councils, and the model classrooms, and the Chromebooks that are donated, and the thousands of dollars in instruments, just to name a few, including some very large donations over the last few years to fund curriculum in our foundations, which have come forward. But we also have some challenges as well. You know, we continue to have challenges around a diverse student body, particularly around English language learners, special education students, students that qualify as economically disadvantaged. And we need to continue to find ways to challenge students who excel academically. So, operational and capital needs. What you'll see in this budget is a real need to tackle a few things. Tackle class size, expand course offerings and opportunities, and provide supports for students and staff. And as you'll see laid out over the five years, in order to tackle really that first one of class size, which will be difficult to do in the sense of, we don't have a lot of space left. You know, we opened up the Brad Street School, removed 15 classrooms from the elementary, and as a result, we were able to backfill almost half. But we were able to significantly reduce class size at the elementary level compared to where we were, relative to where we were. But more importantly, you know, it would take a great amount of teachers, 15, and you'll see that in year five for the middle school, in order to reduce class size from some of the highest probably in the region, the highest in our comparable communities, just to get to the median. And it's critical, I think, and one of the really terrific parts of identifying a staffing plan along with the strategic plan for five years is, our needs need to drive the spaces that we create in facilities master plan two. So, what you'll see here to start is the proposed needs for FY21. And if you just want to take a minute to look, or if you're at home, we're going to go through each with the justification. But it really is, when we talk about supports for students and staff are in these needs, along with tackling class size, along with continued to expand offerings and opportunities for students. So, Dr. Mealy, if we could go to the first position. Oh. So, first and foremost, so the elementary schools here in North Andover for a long time have had one administrator as a principal leading the building. So, we've had schools with, you know, larger numbers of students. They typically have ranged between 300 and 500 students led by one administrator. And over the years, not only have the challenges risen, but so have the expectations. And so, we're proposing at the Atkinson School a halftime assistant principal, which we already have a halftime at the Franklin, we have a halftime at the Sargent. This would be the first step in a multi-year plan to add an assistant principal at Atkinson this upcoming year, and then the following year, we would look at Thompson, do Thompson, and then the following year after that Kittredge. This is critical. In order to free up more time for the principal to be an instructional leader, this person can provide instructional leadership, participate in help with coaching, mentoring, and teacher evaluation, community outreach, engaging with parents, staff support, student support, and will play a significant role in school culture as we've seen them do at both the Franklin and the Sargent over the last few years. The next addition, Ms. Marks.
As the parent registrar of this on, and we're looking to really make the entry process more family-friendly. We have a lot of families that, I think it would surprise a number of people in North Andover. We've had some families come through some very difficult situations, either from within the area or out of the country. So, some significant trauma situations, may not be first language speakers for English. And if we had a parent registrar, we would look to have a central location so that a family who has students say at all three levels would not need to move to each school. We would have one central place. We would get the information from the family to better be able to support them if there were needs. We do have a great community support person here in North Andover who we do use, and we refer families to. If there were English language needs, we could help support that. Right now, I'm in the process of trying to get our registration documents translated into a couple of our more common languages. I had a call this week where a family really needed that. So, ways to really support, have one person who is welcoming, gets that information for all the families, can then transfer that information to the appropriate schools, and really support the families in the transition here to North Andover. In addition, it may help us provide more accurate data to the state, which could impact the amount of state aid we do get. So, there could be that benefit as well to that.
Is that a full ten position?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's really important to realize that in North Andover, we have over 37 different languages in our school system. And we've seen a change in our demographic over the last decade. And I think that's really what makes it such a vibrant community and part of the strength. Grade six teacher, believe it or not, Dr. George Goncalves has, as you know, with the largest class size at the middle school in the district, in the region, there's simply not a lot of space, or there is no space left. And that's why we've been applying to the MSBA for an addition at the middle school. But the addition of a sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Goncalves and the team have worked. This addition would not displace anyone to an inappropriate space in terms of special education or anything like that. But this would just really complete, there's one team of three in the sixth grade, all the other teams have four. This would complete it and make a team of four. And by doing so, would decrease the class size just in that sixth grade by a couple students per class, which obviously is the highest class size in the district. Elementary teachers. So, as we continue to impact class size within our current space constraints at the elementary school, we need to continue with this. It's pretty remarkable tackling this challenge. I think if you look back in the packet and within the executive summary, the percent of classes over the recommended guidelines just a short five, six years ago, we're down to to 14% over those recommended school committee guidelines. But what's really amazing is that in 2014, '15, our K to two class size, as compared to where we stand right now, is minus 2.2 students, down to 21.1. And our three to five average, five years ago, was 24.1, and it's now a 21.7, which is a decrease of minus 2.4 students. That said, we still have a ways to go. And as we look at Facilities Master Plan Two, it is really important that we plan to continue to tackle that. But more importantly, as we took those classrooms out, not only did we backfill some of those classes to reduce class size, we also used those other spaces in order to create appropriate spaces that didn't exist, such as a library, special education spaces, EL spaces, English learners. Middle school multiple supports program.
So we have three new students, they're associated from fifth to sixth grade, fifth to sixth grade, from our multiple supports program at the Sargent School with Shannon Clow. And I don't have enough adjectives to describe what goes on in that program, but for that to go on at the middle school, it requires a teacher with a specialized license and an LPN to carry on those services into the middle school, which those students are going up. And to be part of our community and inclusion, that's a necessity to go in there. So it will allow them to have a middle school inclusive experience. So, and that will need to be carried on from, just for the continuum of services.
Would this be a new program at the middle school then?
It is new students. It's not, I mean, it could, it could potentially be part of programmatically other specialized programs, but it's definitely a different license than the teachers have up there. It's a severe special needs license, which is different than what the programs are at the middle school currently.
Just trying to figure out the distinction.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's important though, Ms. Bucuzzi is new this year as our executive director of special education, and she's conducted an extensive review right now of all programming throughout special education, and will be coming to us at some point with the entry plan. But we do anticipate some changes as a result of that review. And as you'll see in the five-year plan, we have positions that will be included there, but there'll be probably reorganization that is cost neutral in order to best meet those needs. This particular program.
This is not one of those.
Yeah. But providing this particular support, you know, although it's an expenditure to spend money, it is actually, it would be an additional bill to provide those services if we have to send the students out who will be arriving to sixth grade next year. And that brings us to our next piece. The Brad Street Special Education Program, and I think what's pretty remarkable about the Brad Streets, we opened up a new school without impacting the operating budget. You know, and being able to do that. More importantly, everyone knows Ms. Mary Lou Connors and the pre-K program that has existed for a long time in terms of special education, whether it's autism, multiple supports, et cetera. When we opened the school, you know, we needed to provide a continuum of support because the kids who are now in kindergarten, previously used to be in an elementary school. So if you have, you're in an autism program or another type of program in special education in another school, you'd be part of that as the elementary school. And moving forward, we need additional staff in order to provide that continuum of support, not just in pre-K, but now it's pre-K and K students who need that support for the expansion. High school special education.
So similarly, as, as Dr. Gilligan, I believe, said earlier, we're expanding course offerings at the high school, and to adequately support special education students at the, at the high school, we need additional resources to be able to support in a variety of classes. You know, it's, it's not necessarily a matter of numbers, but as you can imagine, as we move forward, you know, servicing students in an elementary school classroom is different than a, a house or a cluster in middle school, and it looks very different at high school. So there's a lot of moving factors with scheduling, and to give special education students the opportunity to take a variety of challenging courses, you know, there really is a need for an additional person to be able to support those students.
Dr. Millie, can you talk a little bit about the out-of-district tuition and the proposed contingency that we added to the budget?
So one of the biggest challenges in our budget is the fact that we rely on a reimbursement to cover operational expenses, particularly, specifically the out-of-district tuitions. We get reimbursed by the state through a program called Circuit Breaker each year. And one of the difficulties with it is that the percentage of reimbursement changes from one year to the next, and you don't know what it is going into the year, or at least when you're budgeting. So we, we budgeted an amount in our operating budget, for instance, if our out-of-district tuitions are expected to be four and a half million, we're going to budget three million, anticipating we're getting one and a half million in reimbursement. But if they reduce the percentage, that might be 1.3, and now we've got to make up $200,000. So what we're trying to do with this one is, is add some money into that line item so that we can protect against those kind of changes. So this would relieve pressure on the school operating budget, because what happens if we're down $200,000 to start the year is we have to get it from somewhere else in the budget, and puts pressure on us right away. There are, there are things that we can't adjust to, which come up every year, whether it's a student moves in, that if we don't provide a one-to-one teaching assistant, they might have to go out of district. So it's much more beneficial for the student and for us to, to be able to provide that. But we lose that flexibility. So it guards against reductions in circuit breaker funding. One caveat, though, that this request, it doesn't matter if it's in the operating budget or what's been a godsend for us has been the Special Education Stabilization Fund, and the establishment of that has been extremely helpful. If we increase the limit on that, that would have the same effect as adding money into the operating budget. So that could be a way to, to handle this as well. And we've been in discussions with, initial discussions with the town manager of possibly requesting an increase to the limits. So if that happened, we could possibly be pulling this request out of the operating budget request.
Our next position, proposed addition is a halftime nurse at Atkinson. Atkinson School, like all of the elementary schools, has a one full-time nurse to service all the students. And the Atkinson has the third highest number of visits to the nurse each month, just behind the high school and the middle school. I think many of you recall the presentation that's done every spring by Cheryl Bazak. And to date, there's, the one Atkinson nurse has seen 2,249 students prior to break, went to break, this year. This year. So this halftime position is, you know, to meet those needs of students, I think as Cheryl said, some of their positive initiatives in the work they do with students really prevents them from, puts them in class more, providing the support they need. And let's remember, I mean, this is a school that is, you know, close to 60% free lunch. There are some specific challenges. The Department of Education or DESE categorizes, categorizes high-need students as an unduplicated count of students who are English learners, receive special education services, receive Title I services, because of income level or were former English language learners. And the Atkinson School's at 48.1% of their students are high-need students. And this is a much-needed position at the Atkinson. English learners. Speaking of that, Ms. Marks.
So as you've heard before, we have a number of countries and a number of different languages represented in our school system, which makes a particular challenge. Some communities, they have primarily one language. It's not, not English, it could be Spanish, it could be Portuguese, it could be, you know, a variety of things. We have a number of different languages that are spoken here. There are some new laws that were passed a little over a year ago through the Department of Ed, in terms of regulations and requirements, in terms of servicing these students. And we really need to update our processes for working with these students to ensure that they are making timely and effective acquisition of the English language. So we've started to do some of those things, but in order to completely do what we need to do for our, our English learners, we need to look at hiring another English language teacher, so.
As many of you know, we've had a, quite a different model, using tutors who are certified teachers. And more importantly, this position would be one FTE. We currently have one that's only existed in the district for some time, and that person's retiring. So without a doubt, one of the full-time FTEs would be at the Atkinson School, and then would have to take a look at the need with the highest numbers for that as additional position. Well, we still have tutors supporting students, but a plan to add two more additional teachers each year coming up in budgets after this one. Okay.
I think I want to flip the coin on this one. Marcy could have just as easily have done this slide, but continuing to pursue opportunities to reduce out-of-district costs is something that we do every year. And Marcy's come in and she's doing her assessment of the department, and we'll be coming forward, we meet on a regular basis to discuss this. And so we will be coming forward with some, some new opportunities that we think are there in order to reduce this. She's going to be doing her ongoing assessment of the in-district programs, as well as you've already heard. We're assuming, just, we do every year, we assume in the budget, a circuit breaker reimbursement of 65%. Last couple of years, it's been closer to 70, 71. This year, for the first time that I can remember, it's actually at 75%. But you can't count on that from one year to the next, as we, as we've discussed. The, and the other thing that will come up during our budget discussions this year is the addition of positions and the impact that that can have on healthcare costs and on OPEB liability. We're keenly aware of that. I actually was part of the OPEB committee, as Ms. Maylie was as well. And so, we are actively looking at opportunities where we can be more efficient in the number of positions we have, in that, you know, it might make more sense to have a teacher than two or three TAs. And so, that might be a way that we could reduce the number of positions. So it's something we're looking at, and other opportunities as well, but we are keenly aware of that in trying to impact it. And as we said, reevaluation of special education needs and recommendations will be coming pretty soon.
Great. And other important changes, Jim's identified a couple in here in terms of contingency funding. We will continue to work with the town manager to identify cost savings, revenue increases to help fund the recommended, identified critical needs of the school department. Jim talked about OPEB. We are working on a, to create a facilities master plan that best meets the needs, but it's also cost-effective. As you know, recently, the town manager and I put out a letter to community members that we were not accepted into the queue at the MSBA again. We will continue to apply in terms of an expansion for the middle school, but we also will be looking at every other possible opportunity as part of Facilities Master Plan Two, which initially, early on, had expansion projects at the Franklin, Atkinson, and Kittredge to look at all sorts of options to best meet those needs. And last but not least, really, in a no-frills budget, and that's what we consider it, we're going to continue to pursue cost-neutral opportunities to adjust to changing needs. And I think that's something we've been really good at over the years, to be able to tackle those things as not only challenges arise, but opportunities arise. And, and we'll take a look at that.
So here are the members. We do this, and looking back, you can see the actuals and how, we do it by program, in this case, district-wide, elementary, high school, maintenance, middle school, special education, technology, and transportation. So you can see how those have changed over the years, and you can see the proposed FY ' '21 numbers in the percentage increase that is from the previous year. And level services, it's been amazing to me how consistent level services comes out to 3%. And that, and that's factoring in different expected changes in contracted services. Some we apply 2% because that's what we've seen, others we apply 3% because that's what we've seen. We include the anticipated salary schedule percentage increases along with the steps that we know will occur, and it comes out very consistently to 3%. And then you can also see all the items we've just talked about, which total $768,000 for a, an overall total increase in the recommended budget of four and a half percent.
And as you can see next, and I encourage folks to also take a look at the strategic plan tied to that equity for all students, targeted professional practice, and the consistent rigorous curriculum. We have laid out the proposed critical needs tied to those objectives and initiatives, as well as, you'll see that in the five-year plan included in the packet. So when you go to the next section called Looking Forward, we've talked about some of those justifications, but if you get an opportunity, I think it's critical to take a look at what we've identified for future positions that are necessary, as well as the justification of why we need them. So we talked quite a bit tonight about class size reduction at all levels, particularly elementary, but there's a need at all levels. One of the key components looking forward is you'll see something called specialist teachers. As we've added elementary classroom teachers, we haven't necessarily kept up with the addition of folks that teach art, music, PE, library media specialists. And we juggle quite a bit having itinerant teachers travel in between schools to cover a class here or there, and then continue to try to meet contractual needs. It becomes harder when they're traveling in between schools. We will continue to take a look at special education programs and teachers, is, that's not a challenge that's unique to North Andover. But under the new leadership of Ms. Bucuzzi, I'm pretty excited about that extensive review, what are those identified needs and where we go from here. Nursing support, we discussed, English language learners, social workers. It's not, it's not unique to North Andover or Massachusetts, it's something that school districts across the country are seeing. We have more and more kids coming to school who are experiencing early childhood trauma. Or we have more and more kids coming to school who face food insecurity and all sorts of adverse conditions, which can be challenging for them to then access the curriculum without additional supports at school. And social workers slash Adjustment Council is, is the actual certification, play a key role. As you may know, looking forward, we've discussed, we've had our reading team in here, our literacy team in. Currently at the elementary schools, we have 2.75 FTEs for intervention. The research on this is really clear. Students, the best predictor of how a student's going to do in this world is whether they can read at grade level by the age of eight years old. And we need to provide the support to intervene with struggling students, and currently there is more demand than we have the ability to provide that intervention. Library, library media specialists is something that we started to tackle a few years back, and it's more than a traditional just librarian. I think in this information age, the ability to evaluate information, the ability to understand the source, the ability to then do a variety of things with information has changed. And library media specialists are somewhere along the lines to have like a technology integration specialist as well. They're really going to, and have been assisting, as you saw in the library presentation, I think it was last spring or in the fall, help teachers integrate technology into the lessons, as well as help students as well evaluate that. One of the other key components they've done, and I think it's made a big impact, is, as you know, we have a keyboarding program that's taught through elementary librarians. And I know, having, you know, a daughter that's 16 now, or almost 16, next week, and a son who's 12, they didn't have that going through at the elementary. And I watch how they type and hunt and pack with touchscreens. And this is critical because it is key to, once we went to computer-based testing on the MCAS, a lot of our students had never really used keyboards. Their entire lives have been touchscreens. So, a critical component. Enrichment programming, you know, the ability to- Enrichment programming, you know, the ability to challenge students, the ability to meet the needs of students. I mean, last year, I think one of the identified critical needs I noticed early on as part of the entry plan and took a small first step was at North Andover High School. We had, we had put a teacher in the budget last year that was approved that picked up AP classes because we had students that were qualifying to get into AP chemistry, yet the course was closed out because of class size and because of the requirements, guidelines by, you know, using chemicals and all those different things as part of an AP chemistry class. And the ability to meet that need, any kid who gets into an AP class, you got to work your butt off. They should have the ability to do it. And other enrichment programming, you know, like I said, these are positions outlined that represent our best thinking at this time. But we'll be continuing to pursue all sorts of options. We'll continue to pursue creative ideas, you know, such as looking at, what can we do in the summer? Can we do something in the summer other than remediation with summer school? Could we do something with college prep? Or a bridge to take kids from college prep to honors? Or the ability to take a class to free up a block in the day so that a student then could take, not have to make a choice between whether it's Corvus and/or something else that's of great interests. Out-of-district tuition, I think we've talked about quite a bit. That's a challenge. I mean, circuit break is budget right up to the limit. And it's been a challenge for us. Unanticipated move-ins, it happens frequently. And I'd like to say, you know, oftentimes people just talk about move-ins. Sometimes you do have move-outs. They don't seem to be as frequent here over the years. But, you know, I think we brought, you know, talked about that a little bit earlier this year when we had three unanticipated move-ins from other communities that we didn't know were moving in. They required substantial services at a, they had a pretty hefty financial cost, which is absolutely what they deserve. Additional leadership support. One of the things North Andover's done really well over the years, maybe to the detriment of other areas, is, you know, when you're in the bottom three percentile of spending in the Commonwealth and when you've had challenges and, and you think back, we've made a lot of progress over the years. But it wasn't that long ago that, less than, you know, a little more than a decade ago, where we had a couple million dollars in cuts, that we have always tried to save classroom teachers. And as a result, other areas have suffered. You know, I think it's no secret that we are very grateful working out an arrangement with the Medicaid money to use in perpetuity as a curriculum fund. You know, that first year of just, I think it was fifty-five thousand the first year, and second year a hundred and fifty thousand and a little over two hundred the next year. It was the first time we were able to purchase updated curriculum materials in almost a decade. You know, so when we've kept teachers, we weren't being able to purchase those materials. I think the other piece is, and Dr. Maylie's really good at this, we've looked at this extensively, is that we haven't added the supports necessary to support staff and students. Administratively, we're in the bottom twenty percent of the Commonwealth, just as we are with the highest class sizes and those types of things. And some of those positions are desperately needed as those expectations of the community have risen, but so have the challenges. Special education leadership and support, as you'll see going forward, is where, we've had some programs significantly grow. What used to be a small stipend for someone to manage special education summer school has now grown into, A, something that is not only beneficial to our kids, but it's beneficial to us financially, to us financially. But things like summer school have expanded, including some really wonderful partnerships like we do with the Youth Center and Rick Gorman and oversight of that. Additionally, special education transportation has become a challenge to manage just out of the regular transportation office. If you think about anyone who's listening at home, how many times you've got a call from Lucy saying, you know, bus fifteen's going to be late, there's a tree down on Barker Street. Yeah. And it's extensive, it is extensive. You know, those students that we haven't been able to build capacity for or that do have to go out of district, it takes quite coordination to figure out how to get someone somewhere that could be up to almost an hour away back and forth each day and trying to figure out how to do that in a way that gets the kids to school, the schools on time, but also to do so in a way that is financially best for us. And last but not least, I mean, you know, it's, you know, back to that piece about, you know, other areas that we defer. I think that, you know, we are lucky. We have custodians that go above and beyond, particularly in the daytime. Heck, they're really part of the staff and the fabric of a lot of our schools. But that's an area that we're well below industry standards. Dr. Maylie comes from an industry prior to education where this was a little bit of his area of specialty. And Dr. Maylie, in terms of maintenance upkeep, you know, do you have any comments on the custodian piece? How we're staffed here at North Andover?
I, I can tell you, in another life, I did work in housekeeping for hospitals and, and how to do studies on productivity. And I was amazed when I got here, the, how far above the standards we are with our staffing here in North Andover. We ask a lot of our custodians. And it starts to show, you know, in, in our schools, they could be better, but not based on what we have for staffing. I mean, and a lot of these items that you see up here have been identified before, but it's not surprising that a contingency for out-of-district tuition or custodial support or leadership are the first to go when we say we only have this much to work with. So they've been identified, but we've never been able to address it because we haven't been getting those increases.
Great. Dr. Maylie, could you talk a little bit about the finances of looking at the staffing over the next five years?
So we have, we have this in a couple of different ways linked on the website. And when we finish the presentation, I'll show you the more in-depth look. But this is the kind of the one-page summary that you can see for the five-year plan. It, it shows you the positions or, in one case, the tuition increase you see in year one. So you can see the seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in year one equates to a four point five-two percent increase. What we've shown here, and you can again look at the more in-depth look, which has all of the justifications included. But in year two, you can see what we would be looking to add. And, and pretty much it's about four and a half percent increase over the next five years, including next year. In that right-hand column, you have colors that match up with the strategic plan. Targeted professional practices, green. Equity for all students is, looks like a fuchsia, I guess. It's supposed to be, supposed to be red.
I'm not sure if that's red.
And then consistent and rigorous curriculum is the purple. And then the letters in there are the initiatives within the strategic plan that these requests tie to. So you can see it in, in one, one look, one page. And like I said, we can go over what it looks like in more in-depth look right after the presentation.
You know, and I also want to be really clear about the assumptions, you know. This is a no-frills budget to address the identified needs. But it also relies on some assumptions because folks may say, well, what about, you know, technology? Or what about some of these other areas? You know, we are fortunate that the consolidated technology budget will continue to meet our technology needs. Right now in elementary school, we're at one point three students to device. And same at the middle school, high school may have some different needs that we will have to cover. But Mr. Grant, who's been in several times, has quite a comprehensive plan of not only the devices and a schedule for replacement, but also keeping up with the network, the infrastructure and, and those components. Secondly, the assumption is that Medicaid will continue to support our curriculum needs. There've been some significant changes to some of the Medicaid coding this year that districts across the Commonwealth are receiving a lot of professional development on right now in order to keep up with that, and we are doing the same. And also the work most recently, taught, working with the town manager around the stabilization fund limits to be adjusted to cover these unanticipated out-of-district costs. So Jim, if you could go to the overview that we just discussed.
So this is what it looks like. It's, it has two parts to it. It's the level services, so if we continue with what we have, what will that cost from one year to the next? And then what the requests would, would add to that and the justification for each. So to begin with, we have in the right-hand column the assumptions we're making. As I indicated earlier, in some cases, we've seen a two percent increase per year on average, so we use that. In other cases, we've, we've seen a three percent increase per year. Utilities is a good example there, so we use three percent. And, and the caveat in this always though is that there could be some differences, some changes. It's five years. We see differences from one year to the next. So for instance, this, during this five-year period, we will go out to bid again for transportation. And we would have to see what would happen there and make adjustments accordingly. But, but what we've seen there is about a three percent increase per year, so that's what we included. And we've done that for all of our different account descriptions and shown, again, this is just how consistent. And what we do for salaries is we assume two percent per year for a salary increase to the schedule and the, the current employees moving up their normal steps and columns. And so it's consistently three percent. You can see three point oh one, two point nine nine, three point oh and three point oh one. And so then we follow that up with the five-year plan, including this FY twenty-one in the left-hand column there. But you can see assistant principal, as Dr. Gilligan mentioned, half of assistant principal in Atkinson in year one, another half in year two at Thompson, and then year three at Kittredge. And in the right-hand column, you can see the justification, in the far-right-hand column, you can see the same tied to the strategic plan and the initiatives in the strategic plan. And we won't go over all of these. They're in the executive summary, the same language for the justifications. But this is just a quick reference for the five-year plan. And then if you scroll all the way to the bottom, and you can see, for instance, anticipating that we may have the space at that point in year five, you can see the fifteen middle school teachers that would impact class size at the middle school. And that's pretty much the only item in that year, in year five. But then when you get to the, the bottom line, it's the same as you saw in that one-page summary sheet of about four and a half percent per year to get to, get us to where we think we need to be to meet the needs of all of our students.
What you may notice in there is there's not necessarily identified, for example, in next year's proposal, we have three elementary classroom teachers or three elementary teachers. And, you know, that's something we typically look at every year and make a decision by, you know, late May, early, typically done by late May because we have to continue to monitor and track what the classes are, what are the needs. And of great import too is, you know, as new housing units become online here in North Andover, we have to think about, you know, where we're going to put them. Oftentimes in some of our schools like Kittredge, you know, you have two classrooms of each grade level and two becomes a really big class, like really big. And you add a third to that and now the class size becomes small. But, you know, we really have to be cognizant of these units as they come online. An occupancy just opened up, for example, over, not Barker, what's the farm it used to, Fajetta? Princeton Properties. Princeton Properties. I, I know it best is across from lots of eats. One of the buildings, one of the buildings just got an occupancy permit and we had two students that we just registered. And, you know, one of the challenges for us is we have to think about, okay, you know, as superintendent in the policies, you know, we could send someone to any particular school. You know, at this point, it, we're not talking about any type of massive redistricting. It's just something we have to keep in mind because when we don't have room at a school and we send a student to another school, we have to provide the busing and transportation to get them there. And it's, it's much more complex than it would seem from the outside. And then last but not least, Jim, in that, in that other component, it's not something we necessarily highlighted, is that, you know, you'll see in the upcoming year, teachers at North Andover High School. And we just had NIASK in, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And we're anticipating they may make some, they'll be making some recommendations around a possible schedule change or recommendations for a schedule, as well as trying to tackle class size. They are at the second highest class size in the region or versus our comparables. And we have a plan to add seven teachers one year and two the next to tackle the opportunities such I mentioned before as like AP but, and expanded course offerings, but also to tackle the class size issue and the schedule, a potential schedule change. And one other position, Jim, in there coming up, although not identified, I think it's year two, Jim. You see a social worker coming online, you know, although not identified there, that would certainly be at the Atkinson School as a result of the need there. I'll point that out. And then I would just say, really in closing, that these are essential needs. And that, you know, it's, it's my obligation, you chose me to lead this community, to identify what those needs are. Certainly, we talk quite a bit, maybe even not enough, about the amazing achievements here in this district because they are amazing. They are remarkable. And certainly, we couldn't do it without teachers that go the extra mile. We have a high retention rate here. And our staff, our coaches, our advisors are amazing. And the parent community, I mean, they just give, give, and give. It, it's remarkable. You know the folks that come in here. I'm not even going to bring up Terry Holland and how much food I think comes from Stachy's every year. But these are identified essential needs. We have some gaps and we've got some challenges. Those challenges, you know, as outlined in the executive summary, we have challenges around really meeting the needs of students who need it the most and students who excel academically and to continue to provide expanded offerings and challenges for them. So whether it's English language learners, whether it's students who are economically disadvantaged or students who receive special education services or students who could use additional advanced course offerings and other partnerships are, are critical. And this staffing is needed to tackle the class size, to expand those course offerings and provide the much-needed support for students and staff in this district. And I think we've been really thoughtful about identifying not only a strategic plan, but a five-year staffing plan based on the, my entry, based on your guidance, based on the goals which our leadership team and several folks within our staff set in the strategic plan. And we think it's, although we are, we will not get close to that per pupil expenditure, that's not our goal. We are extremely efficient of doing more with less. And this is a step in the right direction for us to meet those needs. And what I believe is the right thing for me to advocate for as the leader of this district, as someone who lives in the community and as someone who has the privilege to be entrusted in the care of those forty-seven hundred and sixty-nine students each and every day.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Before I open it up for comments and questions, I just wanted a couple of remarks. So first of all, I am extremely proud of this work that you guys did. Greg, Jim, Lorraine, Marcy, just phenomenal how you tied it all together. You tied it to our strategic plan. You know, you mentioned, you know, we chose you, Greg. And besides your charming personality, one of the reasons I was, and I was a big supporter of, of keeping you, making you the superintendent was I liked the team we have. I have a lot of confidence in the team that was here, that's been here. I know, Marcy, you're new, but everyone else is solid. And, you know, when Jim gives me numbers, I, I, I know they're good numbers. And Jim has that reputation throughout the community. So I'm very proud of the work you did. I'm also very proud of the school committee. We, we started this process back in August. We had our retreat. We started talking about this, this stuff. It's always been on our mind, but I think, you know, this year, we also, we were going to do something about it. We know that there's been shortcomings in the school system. We love our schools. We love our teachers. You know, my experience at Kittredge has been phenomenal. The teachers there have been fantastic. The teachers there have been fantastic. The principal, a little quirky at times, but you know, just a great learning environment. But we can do more. And I know the people in this community want more too. And this sets us on a path, you know? It's not going to get us there overnight, and we dug ourselves a hole over the years. There's no question in my mind, we've dug ourselves a hole. I think it's thoughtful. And I hope, you know, as it goes to the other boards, I know, because we had a couple FinCon members here, I hope they embrace it as well. I hope they push you too. And I have every confidence that when they ask you questions, I think you're seeing them on January 28th, I believe. I hope they push you. And I feel very confident you're going to be able to answer their questions thoroughly and, well, with the same passion that you guys all talked about it tonight. So I will just say that I know it's a bigger number than, you know, the town manager gave us. I hate to put in those terms, but it's always kind of like, well, what did the town manager give you for a number? In my experience over the last five years, and it goes back, I think, eight or nine years, you know, basically, the town manager's given us a number in December, and that was it, end of story. I think anyone who's been following our meetings, paying attention, this is not a surprise to anybody. I know it's not surprising to anyone in this room, you know, maybe a couple of people here. It's not a surprise. So the communication that I know you've had on a weekly basis with the town manager, I hope that, you know, I'm not sure those conversations are private, I'm not going to delve into that, but I just think, you know, I think we all got a letter today around four o'clock from the town manager. It was addressed to the Board of Selectmen, but they CC'd us on it. I was kind of just a little taken aback by it. Because to me, this budget today, it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. And I don't know if it's a surprise to the Board of Selectmen or not, but to me, we've been talking about it for a long, long time. And I know you've been talking to the town manager about it. So a little taken aback about it, but anyways, we are prepared to work with anyone, the Board of Selectmen, the FinCon, go into a town meeting, we have, you know, another four or five months to, I hope we go to a town meeting with a consensus budget. You know, I think part of it, you know, this is the budget, how we're going to spend the money. The other part of it is, you know, the revenue forecast that the town manager put out in December. You know, I hope, as much as you push these guys, FinCon, I hope you push her on the revenue number, because historically, we have always, always had a low revenue number, going back, you know, and these numbers are online. But going back over the last, you know, five physical years, the variances are incredible. FY15, $2.5 million variance. FY16, $4 million variance. FY17, a $2.3 million variance. FY18, a $7.5 million variance. We're asking for, I think the delta is $468,000. I hope when we have these conversations, we're not talking about, you know, pitting department against other department, because, you know, I've seen that show play out in other towns, and it does no good for anybody. I believe that we do have the revenue to support this budget. And I hope the FinCon, you know, I know they will do their homework on it, but I hope they really take a deep dive there and see that we can afford this budget, it is sustainable. You've seen a five-year plan put in place that I know you've given a lot of thought to, and I hope we continue to work with the FinCon, the Selectmen, the town manager, and obviously get to whatever is the second or third Monday in May, Tuesday in May, and can walk up there with another consensus budget. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say. And I know, you know, we're going to have a couple of the cracks at this. We're going to have the public hearing on the 16th, and then we're going to vote on the 6th. But I'll open it up to the members if they want to make any comments or initial questions to Greg and his team. Anyone want to start that? I will say, I just want to say one last thing. The vice chair, Helen Picard, couldn't be here, had a family commitment made long ago. She has been great to work with. We meet weekly with Greg, and I'll let her speak for herself next week, but I know that she's 100% on board with what we're doing here today. So anyways, Mr. McDevitt.
Just a couple of quick things. There's a lot to absorb here. I think there's a lot for the community to absorb. Information was kind of put out, you know, a couple of days in advance so that they had a chance to start to take a look at it. But I think going through this is going to start a lot of conversations, hopefully, good and productive and collaborative and just not, you know, one side versus another. For a number of years, we've really kind of pushed, not just you, but prior superintendents, really, to develop the strategic plan, you know, to see it, to act on it. You regularly update us on the progress of it, right? So, sorry. So it's not just that we're, you know, putting a plan out there and then not achieving on it, but you know, year after year, we consistently see those delivered on it. Very, very nice to see everything that we're recommending, that we're starting to look to, and we may have some recommendations as we dive into this as well, directly tied back to those goals. Nothing is frivolous. Nothing is, well, this would be kind of great, it would be fun to have, right? There's nothing that's in there that's not tied back to that with a direct relationship to students. And that's what it is. When I looked at, you know, just kind of going through the proposed needs that were here, you know, everything kind of impacts a student that's out there. There's no, with perhaps the registrar and the parent liaison, there's no one who's really kind of at the administration level. And I think that that's really important. I mean, I think people always say, oh, the central office is big, or there's a lot of people that's there, and I would argue that it's relatively lean, extremely lean, in fact. But everything that's here, you know, is in a school, in a classroom, shoulder to shoulder with a student, and I think that that's key. The other thing is, I could be wrong, and I know it's been eight years and I don't feel great tonight, but this is the first time, I think, I've ever seen really a five-year projected strategy that's out there. I don't ever remember seeing that in the past. I think we may have talked, you know, you know, a couple of years, we're going to have this, we're going to, you know, be moving towards that. But a five-year plan tied to our strategic plan, relatively accurate dollars, you know, earmarked for that, you know, yes, there'll be some fluctuation, but right there, I think is fantastic. But the thing that I think just continues to stick out is, you know, we do so well in so many areas, and we're 316th in the funding. And I think if you asked anybody in this town, they would continue to be shocked. They might say we're at the average, but the graph that was there, I forget what, I think it was... Yeah, you know, slide nine in the deck, if you're following along. I mean, the gap is not a gap. It's massive. In terms of what we, to get us up to that average. And I think that that's, that's just, that's honestly almost starting to get embarrassing. The other thing I just want to point out, you know, you talked about this, and we've kind of looked at some fundraising numbers last year, and it kind of, I'm not saying it exposed things, but it brought things to attention. You know, we are paying as parents in tremendous other ways to support the kids and the schools that are here, whether it's Chromebooks, whether it's playground equipment, whether it's supplies. We had this conversation the other day. I mean, it's $100 a kid, easy in order to get them supplies into the classrooms. And so, you know, if we're not doing it kind of from a tax basis, we are then, you know, asking the parents to kind of help, whether it's, you know, fees, other expenses that are out there, all of that is there. I'm not saying that a gap is going to erase all of that. I think this is a community that is supportive, but I think because we have so many gaps, we are constantly asking our parents and the businesses in this town to support our schools. And at 316th percent, or 316th in the state, it's embarrassing. Nothing new, I think. Just a statement, how about that?
I think it's certainly a challenge, and I think it's certainly something that some folks are somewhat aware of, but they don't realize the impact over time. And simply put, I anticipate thoughtful discussions amongst the school board. Ultimately, the school board's going to have to adopt a budget, and I anticipate thoughtful discussions with the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen. And the town manager and I have been meeting weekly to find creative and collaborative ways to bridge this gap. But ultimately, to achieve the program that's necessary with no frills, we need to meet these critical needs, because I think that we need programming that is in align with our values, expectations, and aspirations of who we are as a community.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just want to say, I also appreciate the five-year plan. That was very helpful, and I think this is an extremely conservative budget every year.
Lean's the word, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And I echo what Mr. McDevitt said about PTO shouldn't be funding our, you know, model classrooms and curriculum and things like that. So we've done a lot with too little.
So in agreement with all this, what I'd like to say is that this is my fourth year in the school committee. What you just have done is what I thought it was always supposed to be. Putting out what we need and starting a conversation, if we have to compromise, we have to negotiate, then we have to. But if we don't identify what we need, I don't know how we can continue to strive to improve education for our students. So thank you. Couple of just questions that other people might have that I thought we could have ready for next time is, slide 11, the proposed needs, are those in any particular order or they're just all, I know they're all number one, I guess, but I mean, if they're in any particular order, that would be useful to know. What else did I have? Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead. I'm in order of importance, I guess.
They are not prioritized.
That's what I'm asking, yes, okay.
Can I just say something? I mean, we went years ago with prioritizing that, and we had the line, right? Here's the budget, here's where the number is. And when you put that up, and you put a, it's my opinion, when you put a line there that says, here's where we get to for whatever it is, 3%, 3.5%, and anything that's over that is not important, I think that sends the wrong message as a community.
Exactly.
Yeah. I would actually not like to see that.
And I'm not asking for that, I'm just asking if they are in any orders, in case people are wondering if they're in an order of priority. That's, I agree with you, I don't want to do that. I was just curious, people, I think people will ask that. I'd also just be interested in seeing, I love seeing that adding that sixth-grade teacher then rounds out four teachers for each team, and it reduces the student class size across the board by two students. It'd be great to see what are those numbers projected for next year. So does that mean we now have a class of 22? What does that mean? Oh, Ms. Bucusi was talking about the students that are moving to the middle school, the two students. Do you see that as those teachers who currently work with them today, moving with them and then backfilling those people, or new people? And then those people still are in need, obviously, where they are, right? Okay. Exactly. Okay, thank you. And then, oh, at the high school, how many special education teachers do we have now? We said we wanted to add one. It'd be good to know how many we have. If they're a whole bunch of part-time, if they're, I would be interested to know that. And I think that was it. Oh, wait. Yeah, one last thing is the, Mr. Millie, Dr. Millie said about the stabilization fund, you know, you're talking with the town manager right now about maybe increasing how we access that, the percentage we're allowed to take or what have you. That would be a town meeting vote, like it always has been, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it. Thank you for all this.
I know, the next few weeks. Thank you, Amy, by the way. We'll have more questions going forward, but just off the top of my head, you know, just seeing this in writing for the first time, this FY21 additions, it's definitely Atkinson School heavy. Could you or Lorraine maybe speak a little bit about Atkinson School and why that is the case? And I don't know if they can do that today or...
I mean, anyone that read the newsletter last, the last newsletter, and the, just the sheer amount of students where English is not their first language, the incredible number of students, I think they have just about every language possible at the Atkinson. You know, economically disadvantaged is the newer term that the state uses. It used to be free lunch, but they have the highest free lunch in North Andover. They have students that we move in, I think, this year, when I'm at the Atkinson, there's typically, when I visit each class, there's typically three or four students who are new to North Andover. And they have a much higher churn rate, as they call it, in terms of ins and outs. And that comes with challenges. I mean, ideally, no one moves during the middle of a school year, you know, because of the components that come with that change, the food insecurity, the programming, you know, and the outreach we do now, for example, at Woodridge, and we previously did at Royal Crest as well, until management wasn't so assistive in helping us with that. These challenges in terms of whether it's food insecurity, whether it's economic challenges at home, whether it's adverse childhood experiences, whether it's court-involved, family court-involved, there's some high needs that, you know, district-wide, as I mentioned before, DESI has had them at 48.1. I think the district average of high needs is about 28%. So whether it brings challenges, Lorraine?
I was just going to say, you know, I, sorry. You know, to what you, to what you said as well, those excessive needs also increase the demands towards the, I guess, the impact on the special education numbers at Atkinson School. So without, because, you know, the resources that we're talking about are sort of those tier-two resources that we always kind of talk about as a need that impact special education numbers. So that, you know, that is a kind of the vertical printing. That's everything from the registrar to getting the correct information. I mean, we have kids, part of students that come in to school and we don't have the proper information, we're not educating them properly, and we don't necessarily know that until a year later when we're evaluating them ourselves. So a lot of those holes that are happening are from a register, from a reading teacher, from an ELL person. But the special education teachers, I wish everyone could visit their little hub of what, you know, what the setting is that they work collaboratively and not, because they have to, because that's just the setting in there. But they do a phenomenal job, and I feel like the pickup of a lot of those issues ends up on their shoulders. And it's because it might be, maybe not have been discussed so much in the past, because the people over there are doing a phenomenal job, not because it's not an excessive need over there. So it's really, it's a unique setting over there. Yeah.
And, you know, in North Andover, you know, the schools have different makeups, you know, and, you know, definitely, I guess, the Brad Street now is a downtown school, right? The Brad Street would be, or on this side of 125, you know, there's Thompson and Atkinson have different makeups, challenges than some of the others.
As part of my doctorate program, I had to do a project, and I did it on trans D and C in North Andover. Dr. Gilligan actually videotaped my TED Talk on it. But Atkinson, in trans D and C, it puts a lot of pressure on a school to help those students who are moving in catch up. But Atkinson was more than any of the, all of the other elementary schools combined every year in the rate of students that are moving in or out.
What Dr. Beal was saying, when we look at the budget and the projection for staffing, we're looking at additional support staff. That was one of the things that Dr. Gilligan talked about. So we talked about the social worker to help with some of the situations that come with some of those kids that move in. This year, we added 0.75 reading teacher there. We still need more than that. You have kids that are coming in with interrupted education, your kids coming in, if you're dealing with difficult situations, trauma in your history, you aren't always available to learn at that time, so you have that sort of interruption in your learning as well. So there, some of the positions we're talking about would add those supports, in particular in a school like Atkinson. So, and I just want to reiterate what Marcy said, the teachers over there are phenomenal, and they work so hard, and the care and devotion that they give those kids is tremendous. And we are fortunate in this community to have the staffing that we have over there. I'm sure that they would certainly value and embrace any other supports that we could get over there to help those students.
I just say one other thing about the parent liaison/registrar position. What we really anticipate from that, not only helping parents and students transition into North Andover... into North Andover more successfully, but that, we, we would anticipate them checking in on them on a regular basis as well to, to see what other supports they might be needing, but also to provide us feedback about where we might be having people slip through the cracks, or where we might not be providing what we really need to provide. So we see it as a real value.
Dr. Gilligan and I worked at Thompson School. We had one year of person like that, and it was really great. They went out to the home. If a new family came in, they welcomed that family. They brought that information back to us to see how we could better support that family. And that's the kind of things that, that would be helpful that you're, you're referring to, made a difference.
Again, thank you all. Before I open up a public comment here, I just wanted, the people watching at home, you'll have plenty of opportunity to, to comment on this. We have our official, by law, we have to have a public hearing on the budget. So it'll kind of be a more formal setting. But obviously, you can feel free to, so you don't have to run down here and comment on it right now. You'll have, you'll have a couple more bites at the apple. So with that being said, I'll open up a public comment now. If there's someone in the audience who'd like to, it's up to the mic, anything to say? I want to say thank you to the members of the Board of Selectmen who came tonight, so thank you very much. Oh, is someone coming up? Okay, all right. Former school committee member, former planning board member, current FinCom member. Chris Allen. We know who you are. Before the record, we just say you did.
Farmers Market was last night. Chris Allen, three Belmont Street. Anyway, again, so nice to see you. And I'm on this side, and you're on that side. It's pretty cool. I'm really pleased and proud that you've come out with this kind of a budget of specific needs. I mean, I've always said that the group, the school committee, superintendent, your job is to, your job is to advocate for the schools. It is your job, all of your jobs, speak up for what are the needs. And when, a million years ago, we sat in the school committee together, I mean, that was one of the things, it's like, I used to always say, it's like, we have a budget, you get a percentage you're supposed to reach, and it's like, well, what do we need? What do we really need? Can we throw away the numbers and just talk about what we need? Even if we might not get everything, what we need, we're at least going to talk about them so everybody is aware that this is where we're coming from. But to that end, you know, there is, there's the big, oh, this is what we really need, and then there's maybe what we're going to get. So we're going to try to work, hopefully, and make that as close as possible. To Amy's question, I had the same thing about, about your list here. Is it ranked? And if, if it isn't, it really should be, because that's going to be an issue for you going forward. And so I'd like to see some discussion on that, on those, those big items, we were calling them back, the big items that you were, you were going through for year one. So I think that ranking them would be essential, so you can really have a good look at that. The other question I wanted to have was kind of specific, and that was for the middle school special education multiple supports program. I'm kind of curious, I know you talked about a little bit about what happens now in the middle school for that support, and do you know specifically if that will save money? Or in how much money will that save for students that might have to go somewhere else? So I think more detail about that, because those are the kinds of programs for special needs, of course, you'd really want to implement if you think that there's going to be major savings down the roads for keeping somebody in-house. So I guess I'd like a little bit of better understanding about that particular line right there. Another, the last thing really is about the Atkinson School. You just had, you know, quite a discussion about the serious needs in the Atkinson School. I guess I would like to know specifically how much of these one-year things actually are geared towards the Atkinson? I know from some of the paperwork that you were giving us in the Finance Committee, Atkinson actually gets a lot less per pupil than the other elementary schools. Those are just numbers, and my numbers, you know, might be, who knows? I have, I put together a chart, or I have a chart comparing costs from numbers that were given to the Finance Committee, and it was like the pure, pure, per pupil spending was, was, was lower, and we thought maybe it was based on needs and why was that? And so those are things we'll talk to you later about, but it is, what is kind of an interesting thing, and I think that that is a school that does need a lot of attention. And I'm glad that you're, you're looking to focus on that. And again, seriously, great job for all this work. This is, Sasha will be thrilled to see a five-year plan, because it's important to the FinCom, and we'll be chatting a lot later. Thanks very much.
Mr. Allen Court.
So first of all, you know, again, thank you for putting this all together. I really appreciate the five-year view of everything. I think that was great. And obviously, the passion from both the administrative staff and the elected officials is tremendous on this. So thank you for all of that. And the one thing I, I think I would like to see, if possible, is what of your priorities, what can be actually fulfilled with, with the town manager's recommended budget? And, and then what that gap is going forward for the, for the additional funding for the four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand? So, you know, what, what can we do, what can you do with the money that's been recommended by this, by the town manager? And then what's the gap? And then let's see how we can, you know, get to that at some point.
For the record.
Tim Sheehart, two eighty-three Campbell Road. My initial impression with the twenty-one budget and the five-year plan is wow. And I've taken everything to heart relative, as a member of the FinCom. I think the FinCom, myself, Chris, others, will prepare questions for you so that there's no at-the-meeting questions. I want you to be prepared to be able to have answers for us. What I didn't see, and that would be very helpful to me, is what is the population of the kids coming in? I'm sure you got projections. I'd like to see that, I'd love to see a history as well as what you're projecting for twenty-one, even in the out-years. And I know there's a lot of material tonight, so I'm sure you couldn't get to it. The other, which is probably important, but not quite as important from what I've been hearing tonight, was how are the kids doing on MCAS and all their studies? I mean, to everyone's point, we run lean. But maybe, just maybe, as a data point, the MCAS scores prove that we're doing a damn good job being lean. And I'd be interested in that as well. That's all I got. Thank you.
School committee, emeritus? No, nothing? Okay. Great. So thank you. Those are great questions, and I know the, the team will start working on some answers for those that don't have them already. Anything from the board before we adjourn the committee? Again, thank you, Greg, your whole team. Fantastic job, and I'm proud to be your, your chair here today. I'll send a motion to adjourn. Someone? Motion by Ms. Lynch, second by Ms. McDevitt to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All the favors say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're adjourned.